Okay, and that will bring us to item F3, Resolution and Ordinance to Adopt 90-Minute Timed Parking Restrictions in Old Town and Galena, and finding that adoption of the resolution and ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Mr. Ebling?
Good evening, Mayor Perotti and members of City Council. Tonight, we have our, a brief presentation, and we'll be having our contract traffic engineer, Derek Rapp, do the presentation, and we will keep it brief.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ebling. We're here to talk about parking in Old Town, specifically parking time restrictions for Old Town. There's four components of the presentation or the discussion here today. First is a resolution that describes the limits of the parking restrictions. Second, there's a budget appropriation request for the installation of the signs and curb markings. And third, there's an ordinance to both add information about the time restrictions in Old Town, actually, citywide for that matter, as well as restricting parking in time-limited areas to a single block, so, so as to prevent the shuffling of, of cars within the same block and trying to achieve that turnover. And then lastly, is a finding of SEQA exemption for the placing of signs, which is a standard, a standard operation of, of any city. Oh, thank you. So first of all, nothing in, in Old Town is, or everything in Old Town is built upon many, many years of discussion, public, public comment, public, public engagement. As far back as 2011, there was a consultant hired, Walker Parking Consultants, that did a pretty exhaustive analysis of the, the parking occupancy and came up with a list of recommendations. Some of those recommendations included 90-minute parking or time-restricted parking in Old Town, as well as the development of some public parking lots. In the, in the years since that time, Neighborhood Services has implemented two public parking lots, one in, on Orange Avenue and one in the Community West Bank parking lot. And Council approved a, a time restriction and time limits for those parking lots of 90 minutes from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Our goal would be to have the street parking in Old Town along Hollister and up to about one block north and south to match that time restriction of the public parking lots, 90 minutes from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And in addition, as I mentioned, we, we propose a modification to the municipal code, which clearly defines that that, at, at, upon the end of that 90-minute time restriction, vehicles will have to move at least one block, again, to achieve that parking turnover that, that we are looking to achieve in, in Old Town for the benefit of the businesses. Also, as a part of this project, and I think most of Council will recall, during the discussion of the interim striping project, it was discovered that the collision rate in Old Town was, was pretty high, and at many intersections, that had to do with a failure to yield for drivers entering Hollister. So along with this, we, we are proposing some parking restrictions, red curbs, to increase visibility and to improve safety in Old Town. And just, just as a point of, of note, one of the things that caused this, this time restriction to be, to be delayed was about two or three years ago, staff did propose a 90-minute time restriction, but as a part of those safety improvements, those time, those parking restrictions, the parking loss in Old Town was so great that there was a little bit of trepidation over, over that plan. So since that time, we've been focusing on providing more parking supply with angled parking, and now that Council has approved that, that concept plan, now we went back and also looked again at the safety aspects, and have come up with a plan that reduces, that does eliminate some parking spaces, but nowhere near the amount that we were three years ago. The plan three years ago was in the ballpark of about 30 spaces lost. This plan, as it stands today, would lose about 13 spaces, and the interim parking plan, which is anticipated to be implemented in June, would supplement, would, would add back those 13 spaces and then some. So, so in, in effect, the safety improvements, the, with the safety improvements, though, still will be a net increase. And the other important, the important, other important aspect is that no one block face will lose more than three parking spaces. So it really does distribute, this plan really does distribute the parking evenly and equitably. As far as the implementation goes, the plan is currently, upon approval from City Council, staff would be ordering the signs and materials, and going through a quick quote process to secure a contractor to install these signs. We believe that this contract would be under the city manager's approval authority, and that would expedite the process. And we are hopeful with all lead times and, and supply chain issues, that we could have this implemented by April of next year. We have coordinated closely with both the community relations and Neighborhood Services, and Neighborhood Services is prepared to enforce signs upon posting, and the Neighborhood Services Division will be assisting us with public outreach and, and press releases to the community. And with that, I'll, I'll leave, leave for comments and questions.
Have we heard, I, I have not, I don't know if others have received any emails or calls on this, I haven't received anything. Have we, have we discussed this with the business community lately, or is it just, they're probably learning about it from the meeting tonight, or, you know?
Madam Mayor, members of Council, this really was an outgrowth of the interim striping project, and the discussion there was always a balance of parking and safety. And so we had understood, there was not an additional outreach effort on top of what has already taken place. If you'll recall, we had the, we had a community meeting in late September, we had another one scheduled in late October, but that one was converted to a, an actual City Council hearing, where of course the public could, could attend. So, and, and then there was the decision to move this forward because there was so much public interest in getting this 90-minute parking restrictions installed in advance of the Old Town interim striping, which is going to be installed early, early to mid-summer of next year. So we'll be only two to three months in advance with this parking restriction.
Mayor, also our Assistant Director, Nina Buelna, would like to chime in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'd like to also add, after this hopefully is approved tonight, we plan to work with the Public Information Officer and do a press release, letting everyone know that this is happening, the schedule, and then, once it's prior to it, right before it's installed, then we'll do another, another press release, letting the public know that these signs have been installed, what to expect, and the expectations.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilmember Kiriyako.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and the update. I, I do think there will be a lot of people in Old Town, particularly the businesses, that overall will be very happy this is happening for a few reasons. One is, I can't tell you how many times I've talked to someone who has been concerned about trying to turn off of Teca Lotte or some of these other streets onto Hollister, and there's a car right up on the corner, and it's just so hard for them to see. And I do think that having reinforcements coming in with parking, increasing supply, and creating places for these cars to rehome themselves when it's employees will be really helpful. So my first question is, we just recently worked to acquire 35 parking spaces on Carson Street. What's the status of getting those parking spaces up and, up and running so that people could, particularly, I'd say, you know, employees who can then walk a few blocks to their businesses and leave more of the on-street parking in front of businesses to their, to customers? When is that going to come online?
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Kiriyako. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure.
I'm sorry about that.
So when can we expect the newly acquired parking spaces along Carson Street between Orange Avenue and Fairview? When can we expect those to be available to the public?
So as a plan with the interim striping project, we plan to add parking signs, so it's more visible of all the parking available in Old Town, so we'll, we plan to do that with the interim striping project.
So they wouldn't come online until the summer?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't we just finalize the agreement to acquire the spaces, though? Why would we, why would we need to wait so long to have, be able to start telling the public they can park there if we own them?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriyako.
Or if we possess them?
Yes. That was, it was either last meeting or the meeting before, where, where the city accepted those parking spaces. And it's, it's certainly conceivable that we could group those in with this plan. That area is outside of the, the original scope of, of this plan, but it's probably another handful of signs that we could include in with this, with this project. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
If I may, and welcome Megan, our city attorney's additional comments, but one thing is, so as the own, not the owners, but the actually controllers of that site, we could have it open and be used and unposted and not have regulations, and see how it goes, see how much uses we're getting, and then, you know, make the incremental changes to add additional restrictions. So that is an option, I believe, that's available to the city to, to bring those online immediately. The other portion of it is, as was mentioned briefly earlier, we would want to have those be subject to the same rules as the other lots, so that we avoid confusion to the public, even our, our parking enforcement officer, just to make sure we're keeping track of things in a, in a much more easier manner. But I believe that option is available to us.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriyako, they're ours, they're ours now. So it's, this is like a signage issue, I think, and so we just, I think we want to meaningfully sign, but if there is a way to sort of interim sign or do something to help relieve the parking issues, staff, those are our spots, those are our spaces, so we certainly can start using them.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I definitely, when I go around Old Town, I definitely see those spots already being used, and from what I can tell, not necessarily being used by people working at the prior owner of the spaces. So I think people are starting to occupy those spaces, but it would be good to have a plan and to be intentional about it, and especially given the action that we're getting ready to take here, it would probably be really in our best interest to be able to do a little bit of give along with the take, right? So my next question is really, you know, this was alluded to in terms of working with the PIO to do a press release, but, I mean, it's, it's late at night, it's December 20th, Hanukkah started a couple days ago, it's a couple days before Christmas. What's our plan to really meaningfully and repeatedly engage with the public to make sure that they know this is coming? I do believe there are parts of this they're going to welcome. There will be, also be some businesses that'll be concerned that they're losing a parking space in front of their store, we could probably guess which stores those would be. So being able to tell the other part of the story, I think, would be important. So what's, what's our plan to engage? I know there's going to be, I know we're working on putting together an Old Town meeting in January, and I think that's being worked on, but what's, what's our plan here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriyako, in addition to the, the efforts that Ms. Buelna brought up about working with our PIO and, and having more of a, a general blanketed public communication, I, I don't see any, anything keeping us from having more personal one-on-one interaction with specific businesses, especially those on corners where they are going to be losing parking spaces. I mean, there aren't that many corners, so it would not be a Herculean effort to, to just go out and, and make that personal contact.
Yeah, thank you, I'd appreciate that. I think there's an opportunity to, sorry, I'm going to kind of veer from questionings to comment here. I think there's an opportunity to kind of re-educate the public about the, the different parking spaces that we've acquired and are providing now in recent years. I can't tell you how many times I've seen vehicles circle a block repeatedly when there were available spaces at the Community West parking spaces that we've acquired, and you know, plenty of parking spaces were there. The Orange Avenue lot that we acquired, that's behind Pataya and across from Mariscos. There's an opportunity here to, to educate the public and remind the public in some cases about all the new parking options you have, so that you don't, you won't feel quite so inconvenienced if there was one less spot on, you know, Hollister and Magnolia, right, or, or Hollister and Rutherford, et cetera. My last question, the Orange Avenue lot, this has been something that's kind of been a thorn in my mind for a while. We've acquired that lot, we, we've had that lot, and it's got some striping in, there's some dedicated parking spaces. Setting aside for the moment that it's not the easiest lot to navigate getting in and out of there, what are our plans to address the condition of the pavement? I've, I've talked to a lot of Old Town neighbors who, they don't like parking, parking there, they're afraid they're going to get a flat tire, or, you know, something's going to happen. It's pretty chunky.
Excuse me, Mayor Perotti, Councilmember Kiriyako, with the Orange Avenue parking lot in particular, probably about two years ago, we decided to reopen it, it'd been closed for a bit, and we did all kinds of weeding, we slurry sealed it, we repainted the striping. And at that time, we also realized, we started to investigate more about the circulation and how that parking lot works, and how that parking lot does or does not work with the adjacent property owner at the restaurant. And as of today, we don't really have any right to connect to the restaurant's parking lot, so that makes it very challenging in and of itself. So knowing that, we restriped it so that there's the ability for cars to be able to turn around on the city's parking lot, and that really sort of restricts how many spaces we can put there. So we, we knew that going in, and then what we've been looking to do is ultimately add that into one of our pavement projects, where we can, you know, try to achieve some economies of scale with another project, and add that in, and so we are still looking at that potentially, not this coming pavement project, but probably the next one after that. So we, we have not forgotten about it, and we were looking when we could put that into one of our projects.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, when that, when that parking lot isn't terribly full, you know, it, being able to, to turn around and get out of there isn't a Herculean task, but when it's being utilized, you're really realistically looking at going in reverse and hoping there's not a vehicle waiting to get in, and then that forces vehicles to kind of queue in the streets. So anything that we can do to at least improve the, the condition of the pavement itself on, you know, sooner rather than later, I think would be greatly appreciated. Great, thank you.
Councilmember Kasten.
Yeah, hi. So I guess, I just want to sort of flag, it's really just following up on Councilmember Kiriyako's points, and, and just emphasize, there's that period, that time before the interim striping, where there's a reduction, as you say, there's a reduction in spots, and we have the timed parking, but, and which will free up spots on its own, but we also, because of the red curbing and so forth, are reducing spots. And I'm, I'm a little anxious, in a sense, about that period of time before the, before the interim striping comes in and compensates for the lost parking spots. It may be that the yardie spots that Councilmember Kiriyako referenced, the 35 spots, or the, you know, better signage and so forth, will compensate for the reduced spots, but I guess, I, I think, be aware of that, I, yeah, that there is that period of time where we're going to be this awkward period, and think about how the timing, what makes sense, is it, to, when we should phase these things in, or when we should do stuff to make sure we don't create some sort of artificial bottlenecks there. Add one other thing, or two other things. One is also, is there opportunities for the businesses in the area to find out more about through, was it Parking Solutions, no, not Parking, Traffic Solutions in SB CAG to learn more about for their employees, for those employees who no longer will have access to ready parking spaces right in front of the businesses? Maybe there are more options than they're aware of in terms of commuting, the trains that we just talked about, buses and so forth. Are there options for them that are available or that need to be developed, or just we need to communicate the potential commuting options better to those businesses? You know, just, it's just an outreach question. Can you clarify what the situation is?
Mayor, Mayor Perotti, Councilmember Kasten, I think that's something we, we can proactively do, we can reach out to SB CAG and get some more updated information from them regarding the more, most current sort of alternative transportation modes, commuting services that might help the citizens and the, the workers for Old Town. I also am hearing loud and clear that, I think, as we look to order the signs for the project, we can certainly order additional signs that make other spaces such as Orange Avenue or Community West Bank parking lot and the yardie parking areas more identifiable as public spaces, so certainly you can easily do that. And lastly, because we are moving fast and we have not put together the, the bid package for this project, I think we were kind of trying to brainstorm here really quickly on the fly to do more of the public outreach. And I think one of the things we can do, that we typically do on projects such as pavement projects, is, is a public outreach effort by the contractor that includes things like flyers and door hangers and, and walking to business and business to business. So I'm, I think I'm hearing pretty loud and clear that that part of our bid package that we require the contractor to do might be a really great idea, so I think that we will add that in as well. So hearing what your comments are.
That's good. And I would just add one other thing also, is that even, so that reflects sort of proactively taking, doing these things to make the information available and so forth, but if there's some sort of evaluation process of some kind to assess how it's working, if there's bottlenecks, if there's, are issues, that would be helpful for us to know.
Mayor Perotti, Councilmember Kasten, that's another area, because of this sort of interim, interim period of having the, the parking restrictions installed, but still getting to installing the interim striping project. We had not contemplated a, a sort of a monitoring program for that brief period of time, but overall, as you may recall from our previous presentations regarding the interim striping project, that that is integral with installing the interim striping project and then understanding how it's performing. So I think that's something we can do, maybe there's something we can do with our staff in that interim time period to make sure it's operating well when it's just out, when there's just the parking restrictions, so we can certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, it doesn't have, I mean, the interim striping is going to have a significant monitoring process develop, but this might be just something more, I don't know, informal, but some, but it would be helpful just to know if there's something that we should be aware of.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Valdez.
If I may, just as a reminder to Council and the public, we did have a Walker study many, many moons ago, which has been referred to several times in previous meetings, but one of the big things that's often forgotten in that study is the amount of parking lots that actually exist that are private and belong to these businesses. So part of the pressure that comes with saying, oh, we're reducing some of the parking for employees, is, well, maybe, you know, with the more robust enforcement, with additional restrictions, business owners, tenants will look at how they use their parking behind their businesses more efficiently, maybe they don't try to store things there, maybe they try to upgrade them. Every little bit of that helps, and so even if it's one or two spaces behind those buildings, it quickly starts to add up, they don't have to be subject to the restrictions because it's their private parking, and then maybe that's something as part of the outreach that people indirectly get that like, oh, this is coming, we need to start looking at this a little bit differently, but just another reminder.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Richards.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Perotti, Richards.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep this brief, just one question, just to follow up to the Carson Street. Are we talking that that would be the 90-minute parking, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., just like the other city lots? Is that, is that the idea? I, I heard some kind of comment that, oh, well, maybe that could be for employee parking during the day or something like that, but I just wanted to clarify if that's been decided.
I think to the degree we want to have restrictions, we want to maintain those and have those be consistent. It could be for this interim period, interim, interim period. We could not be so quick to want to have restrictions there as to allow for maybe an additional kind of landing period for, for that to consider, and that's why we'd brought up that if we don't have the restrictions, are not required to enforce them, but that could be an option to look at and actually see what kind of use actually gets used. We'd obviously want to make sure that they're not abused, and we don't have some long-term parkers, so we've been working with the city attorney's office to see what we can do to make sure that doesn't happen, but again, we're trying to find a way to soften the blow as we have these interim projects, and that could be one pursuit that could be taken. Right now, the item before you, I believe, is just limited to the, what's on the scope of the, the maps that have been presented, so food for thought.
Okay, and then my, my follow-up, my other question then is, what is our enforcement plan in terms of, you know, how that will be monitored, how often will it be looked at? Are we going to need to look at additional personnel or another parking vehicle?
Sure, and, and we partially addressed this back in October, at the October workshop when this, this came up. Right now, we have not submitted, and nor do we anticipate submitting unless it's as part of the budget cycle, we'll be having that discussion. I was, I was reminded of that earlier this, this evening, and, but part of that is twofold. Obviously, the same parking enforcement officer can't be in the same places at the same time, and so we would move to have some sort of kind of oscillating schedule that you'd never know when they're going to be there, kind of approach. The other issues that we're having, and I think we brought it up partially at the October meeting, the Sheriff's Office is having a really hard time hiring across the board, really hard. So it's not just us, you know, asking for another position, I mean, even here at City Hall, we're having a hard time recruiting for positions that have been open for months, if not over a year. Mr. Ebling can talk to that. So it's, it's kind of one of those things where we, you know, do we rush out to try to get one, and can we even get one, and what will it cost? Do we, you know, gently walk into this and then start? walk into this and then start having more information that we either do need one or we're doing okay? I would be lying to you if I thought that one parking officer for the whole city, especially with now more restrictions, would be sufficient. I don't think it will be. But is it something we need to race out and do at this point? In my opinion, I don't think that's necessary.
Well, and when I say, you know, are we going to need more, I didn't necessarily mean now, but
Oh, no, absolutely.
Is that the plan? Like, when we have our budget discussions next spring, are we going to be looking at, that's what I meant.
I think part of it is looking at, you know, how this will unfold, partially. I'm kind of just giving you some ideas off the top of my head right now. But the other part of it is also, you know, all these questions have brought up more questions. And so there's been questions about parking permit programs. Is that something we're going to move towards? Those require resources, and maybe that's part of what we look at as a holistic parking enforcement program. Right now, what we're doing is essentially responding to complaints and doing what we can. And then obviously, our parking enforcement officer and our sheriff's officers, when they see blatant violations, are able to do that quickly. We were out there last week, and we saw the parking enforcement vehicle and the officer out and about right there by Johnny Wallace Park. Would it be nice to have, you know, kind of constant, constant enforcement? That'd be great. But then you also run the risk of, are we actually being a little too hard on folks in an area that's not the most, you know, high income of the city as well? So these are all tough questions that the council gets to wrestle with, and we'll try to be here to provide our recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
It is a tough question, you know, because what do you do? You know, I think the idea of the 90-minute, it's been talked about, you know, for a long time, and I think it will help. But if you're not consistent in enforcing it, I'm not sure how that's going to work. And I know one person can't do it all. I mean, he's got the whole city, right? So, yeah, I think eventually we're going to have to have another parking enforcement and officer. And, you know, I think the problem, a lot of it comes from, well, not all of it, but the fact that there are businesses, there's a three-story building, hate to single them out, but I did work there for many years. It was Community Action Commission, it's Communify now. And they have a lot of employees in that building, a lot. And there's no place for them to park. They have a parking lot, but it's not sufficient. So, you know, going to those, I would agree with Councilmember Kasten, going to those companies, maybe with traffic solutions and really trying to work on carpool and, you know, bus share or ride share. And, you know, how can they get their employees? Because when I worked there, I had to drive around for quite a while to find a place to park. And occasionally, I parked on Hollister because you knew you wouldn't get a ticket. So I'm sure that that is taking up some of the spots on Hollister. But yet, you know, they're employees and they need to, they need to get to work. So, yeah, there's other issues that will come with this. But I think that moving, this is moving in the right direction. We've been talking about it long enough, it's time to try it out. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kuriako.
I just want to second, or no, maybe it's third, the notion of having some kind of a, some kind of investigation of traffic solutions, carpool, you know, bus pass incentives. We've got to do something to make it easier for the people who are commuters, employees coming into the Old Town District to be able to have a place to, to be able to have a way to get to work quickly, safely, efficiently, and affordably. And whether that's bus passes and, you know, increasing bike parking and other things, we need to look at a variety of options. One thing that we haven't brought up in this context, though, is, you know, a big part of the Old Town visioning process is going to be circulation and zoning and all of these things. So that's an opportunity for us to have a robust conversation about, do we need to have an employee permit parking program? Do we, what are the different tools that are in the toolbox that we need to use? Because I can't tell you to, sorry, I'm going to briefly talk about a political campaign that recently happened. I don't know how many times I walked around Old Town and talked to residents where they complained about certain households that were storing four or five cars in the street, businesses that were on Hollister, that were storing vehicles that they were working on, like garages and things, that were storing vehicles on side streets. We need to do something about the circulation challenges in Old Town. This is a critical first step towards doing it. The combination of the timed parking and doing the safety improvements with the red curbing. So I'm really glad that we're moving forward with this today, but this can't be the end of the conversation. We need to do a lot of community outreach and engagement. That needs to be in English and Spanish, and it needs to be repeated over and over again until there's a lot, until people get it, until people are clear. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak?
No one on the webinar, but we do have Jason Chapman in person.
Hi, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm always impressed by your endurance for these meetings. So, yeah, about the parking, I wanted to say that, you know, the need for parking is insatiable, especially when you're considering single occupancy car trips. You know, a car takes up about 200 square feet and more if you consider the navigating space. And a person takes up maybe three, four square feet. You know, that's a really big difference. And to take up that much of our precious, you know, urban area is, is a really high cost. And I appreciate the council members who have brought up really getting serious about trying to get everybody there who goes there regularly to Old Town from outside of Old Town without needing 200 square feet per person. I think that we should always keep that in mind when it comes to meeting our parking needs. Because if the status quo continues of more people in Galita, more people in Old Town, but everybody still has to drive everywhere they go, then unless we want to spend millions of dollars in building a parking structure, we will never meet the need. So I really do appreciate being conscious of that. I think that this is a really good step towards more intelligently using the precious space that we have dedicated to parking. You know, it's been shown that, you know, different incentives and penalties really help to increase the vacancy, which does reduce the idling and going in circles, which is a huge, I mean, source of pollution and just waste of time and energy. And I think that this is a really good step towards that. I had a couple of questions, if you have time, and kind of comments depending on the answer to those questions. So one, where does the money for fines for parking enforcement go? One thing that's been really successful in a lot of cities is using the cost of parking, be that metered parking or parking fines, to actually go towards projects that help reduce the need for parking. So transit-related projects, infrastructure-related projects. And then the other question is, does the parking enforcement need to be done by a fully qualified police officer? I'm not sure if that's the case now, but that would be interesting to consider. I guess a civilian, especially since it can be automated, you know, driving the truck around, it just sends a letter, and maybe the person doesn't get cleared out right away, but they get a letter and a fine, and hopefully they remember that next time. So, thank you, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you for those questions. Thank you. Mr. Valdez, can you answer those two questions?
I believe I can. So just to be clear, our parking enforcement officer is a member of the sheriff's office but is not sworn. It's what's called the sheriff's service technician. The idea, these are individuals that can do a lot of the work that deputy could do and more specialized, that doesn't require a gun or being a peace officer. That's one portion. In terms of the revenues that come into the city as a result of the fines, those ultimately end up in the general fund. So as they're going through the process, how that general fund is spent on the outside is really at the discretion of the city council. I've seen where cities have committed to moving those dollars to certain funds or creating certain, you know, they call them trusts or trust funds for either building additional parking, investing in any number of different things. But the one thing that to keep in mind is here in the city of Galita, you know, we don't have metered parking, and that's not really a revenue source for the city. And for many reasons, that's been the case for years. So, you know, the revenue that we generate is not this, you know, voluminous amount that is accruing to the city. So hopefully that gives a little bit of perspective on those questions.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other speakers on Zoom?
I have no attendees on Zoom, so there's no members of the public.
They're done for the evening. Okay. So we have a few motions to be made here. Who's um?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I mean,
You have to read them.
Okay. I can do it. Okay. I move that we adopt resolution number 22, next in line, entitled a resolution of the City Council in the city of Galita, California, establishing parking restrictions on specified streets and street segments in Old Town, Galita. B, approve a budget appropriation of $67,000 from general fund, unassigned fund balance to account 101-50-5800-51062, maintenance in streets. C, introduce and conduct first reading by title only and wait further reading of ordinance number 22, next in line, entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Galita, California, amending chapter 10.01, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, of the City of Galita Municipal Code to correct outdated elements of the code and to require vehicles parked in restricted parking areas to not re-park within the same block. And D, find that the adoption of the resolution and ordinance is exempt from the city of, from the California Environmental Quality Act under guideline 15301C, and direct staff to file a notice of exemption within five business days.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Not seeing any. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kasten?
I'm muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuriako?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayz Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp, Richard?
Yes.
And Mayor Prodey.
Aye. Ayes have it. Well, you have to consider, I'm not quite sure exactly where Councilmember Kasten is, but I think there might be a few hour difference. Maybe it's like possibly 1 o'clock in the morning for you. Anyway, okay, thank you.